We are at seven oh four, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh first order of business is the regular meeting um from July fifth, uh that was just our regular board selection meeting. Um did you have a chance to look over the minutes?
Yep.
I did too.
Everything's fine.
Any issues? I guess a motion to approve July.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the uh.
July five.
July meeting, yeah, wow.
I'll second. I know.
All in favor? Opposed? Alright, the next is our special meeting, which is a uh thank you Julie for that, it is short and to the point. No one paragraph looked good, good to me. But uh.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Thank you, Kim.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright, now we are on to tax collection report. Um so we did finish um last year, the highest year as a collection rate. Um that we've seen in a lot, I went back to two thousand sixteen. Uh and we haven't seen this kind of rate, we ended up at a ninety nine point six six collection rate.
Wow.
Who's that point four?
That's.
I know, right, well, we'll talk later, Russ, no, just kidding. Um so it's our, a- and just as a rule of thumb, our projection uh is ninety eight point eight. Um we absolutely uh they did a great job. Um I do have two uh requests for refunds this month for overpayment. Uh one's a pro rate for five dollars and thirty four cents, and then one was an overpayment of eighty eight eighty six. So I'm looking for a motion to uh approve those.
I'll make that motion to approve those uh rebates.
Alright.
I'll second.
Russ to get it and Kim to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, um next is uh communications from the public. So we do have someone from the public, Laura, thank you for joining the call. Excellent.
Hi, I'm Laura Sacks, I'm a resident of Falls Road. And I'd like to thank Patrick for putting speed bumps on Falls Road as a topic of discussion this evening. Um many cars, as I'm sure you're all aware, use Falls Road as a shortcut between Minor Bridge and South Street. Falls Road is windy, especially at either end of the road. There are no signs on the street to indicate to drivers what the speed limit is on Falls Road. And they come off of South Street and Minor Bridge at much higher speeds than should be used on Falls Road. Um I'm often walking on the road and I have lost track of how many times I've almost been hit by a car that comes around a bend speeding. Um and then comes upon a person walking or a person on a bicycle. So I would like for the town to consider putting speed bumps on the road. Both as a deterrent to speeding cars um and for using it as a shortcut. But also for the safety of all the people walking on the street and riding bicycles.
I didn't know that there were no speed signs on Falls Road.
You know, I actually um when I reached out to Patrick. I I actually paid attention because I wasn't totally aware of that either. There there is a sign indicating that the road is windy when you come off of South Street. But on nowhere on the road does it tell you what speed a driver should be driving at.
Well, that's an easy fix, right?
Yeah, totally.
Oh, absolutely, I can do that, tip it, well, um. Do you want to, we do have this on there, but since this is a uh a public comment, we, you know, we can kind of just uh continue to go with that now. Um what we had done on Weller's Bridge is we had a public forum. Um to to get your neighbors involved, to get uh more of an input on this. Because obviously, there's, you know, several people that live on the road, I agree that uh it's definitely a shortcut. Um and we've seen that in, well, no different than Weller's Bridge, Squire Road, um there's some definite roads that have uh definitely some issues. And we've seen it increase over COVID. Um people just drive faster, and I've had plenty of conversations with the the police officers about that. So, you know, I'd like to kind of move to that direction, but with, you know, I can get by the end of the week, as long as I have them. Um some speed limit signs on that road. And what would be nice too is to get some data on how fast people are going. So I had, I was thinking about our uh, you know, just, I knew you were coming on, so I thought about Falls Road. And um one of the speed traffic signs that we had put up um was on uh South Street, right by Davenport as you go up. I actually have the stats uh before the meeting, I always want to know what the monthly stats are. Um that, it actually, there's not uh one daily average that even hits the speed limit on that sign.
And I'm sorry, which which road are you at?
We're on South Street, heading north.
Falls Road, right?
Yep, right, it's just past.
Davenport, that's alright.
Uh Mallory, I said, I meant Mallory, my apologies, I meant Mallory.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that, so it's right, I I could see why you were confused.
Yeah.
I, we got a bridge going on Davenport, every other word is Davenport lately, my apologies. Um from Mallory, so um I I'd love to collect some data on that road. Let's see what the peaks are, let's see, let's put some hard numbers to it, so we can say, you know, this is how fast people are going. Um because although we've had a couple people over fifty miles an hour specific times uh on South Street. It's literally the middle of the night, um that's when people are flying, that two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock. Yours is a little bit more that rush hour when people are going to work and going home, is that correct to say?
Or it's other times of the day when you have a slow car ahead of you on Minor Bridge and South Street, and you want to try to cut it off. Because you think they're going to be going the way that you're going and get ahead of them.
Absolutely, alright, um.
There are only, just to let you know, there are only ten houses on the road. So the amount of traffic that we have and the speed that cars are going at, it's not local traffic.
Right, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Well, why should that matter? Because I use a lot of roads in a lot of other towns, I mean, of course, it's not local traffic, it's. You know, we get a lot of state funding to help us with our roads. I don't want to make this a us against them thing. Uh but I'm gonna say it upfront, because that's who I am. I'm not, I'm not in favor of more speed bumps all over town. I think it's, if we do it here, then somebody else is gonna want it, somebody else is gonna want it. It takes away from the rural character, and I I'd like to see it handled through uh police enforcement. Since Laura's made an issue of it, you know, put a, put a cop down there and see how many tickets he could write. That's what dissuades people. Um, you know, people on Squire are starting to talk about this. And so every main road we have in town, every artery road, I'll call them, we're gonna put speed bumps on them. I I don't see that as country living.
Um. I don't think, Russ, they have to be permanent, but it's a, it's an indicator to drivers that you need to slow down on the road. You know, if you're using this as a shortcut, slow down.
Right, so education and more cops is the answer, I think.
Uh see, speed bumps are a lot cheaper than another cop on the street giving out tickets.
With the cops are are town employees, we don't pay them by how many roads they go out on. They're on patrol, Patrick could tell them on your patrol, please go down there and sit and let's see what happens. And I do agree with Patrick, I'd like to know what the neighbors think, but overall. You know, I know there was a lot of positive on Weller's Bridge Road. And it took those people a lot of years, a lot of hard work. Um but that's the one thing people come to me about, it's not that bad, but they don't want to see these things all over the place. And they, they don't want to see these speed signs all over the place either. I mean, talk away, take away from the rural character, beautiful scenery, and we got, you know, we're putting speeds, a lot of speed signs up. I agree with them in the middle of town, where people are coming into town, but I can't agree with them all the way out here. Um at this end of town. I don't think it's gonna solve any problems, that's just my opinion, Laura. You don't have to agree with it.
I don't agree with it, so we can agree to disagree.
But I'm saying what my opinion is, that's how I feel.
I I don't care what the solution is, as long as we can get the cars to slow down on the street. Especially at either end where it's windy, because it's dangerous.
Yeah.
It is, it's dangerous to ride on eighty four like I was today, with somebody pass me on the shoulder.
But people don't walk on eighty four, people, that's also part of the rural characters we all be at in nature.
Over town, Laura, it's all over town, that's the complaint on Squire. Um but it's not just our town, it's everywhere. And people need to slow down, and we need to get that message out there, but we all complain, but I'm gonna keep bringing this up. When we went heavy with cops on speeding, mostly Roxbury residents were the ones who got the tickets. And Bill Curio will back me up on that fact. So, let's see, I mean, I think the answer is put the signs up, put the cop out there. And and let's see if there is a problem. I mean, I almost get run over on Garnet Road, trust me. The FedEx guy, I had to call FedEx to tell that guy, he's gotta slow down. Um and don't walk up the hill on Garnet Road, because people coming down, it's dangerous wherever you go. But it's an area-wide national problem, and we're all, we're all at fault. But I agree with you, Laura, thank you for bringing the uh issue up, that's what we're here for, let's do something.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you so much for just even talking about it and considering any kind of solution that will help slow down the cars. And I think starting with speed signs, you know, what the speed limit is would be really helpful.
I think we have a couple actionable items here that I could do, and I I kind of. Um and I know you don't necessarily like the speed sign, but it, I'm not buying anymore, we're still using the same ones, I just keep relocating them.
Oh, okay, you're moving them around?
The one that I was proposing, you know, obviously, it's not on Davenport, it's off Mallory, um but that sign isn't collecting any data. It's not giving us any numbers, it's it's obviously, you know, although there was several people that came to me about that issue. It's, figures show that it's really not an issue. Um so whereas we saw in Weller's Bridge, you know, we knew we had a hundred and twelve thousand cars passing. And we knew where, that we had people over seventy miles an hour, um that we were able to tag. So any of those speed numbers that display your sign, whether they're lit or not, because most of them um shut off after ten miles an hour over the speed limit. And the reason why they do that um is so it's not a high score kind of mentality, we we need to, you know. It's okay to record it, but we are recording the 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 um.
The data.
Speeds everybody's doing, what times they are, you know, I I can break it down with a weekday average, a weekend average. This is the stats from South Street sign for one month. So we know volume, we know speed, you know, we can do that, and then I think it helps making a more educated decision on whatever we do. You know, um. I think every road, um because I even with the speed bumps, I I see it in front of my house. Where somebody's gonna come through at seventy, eighty miles an hour, or motorcycle's gonna just rip it. You know, and i- you know, i- that's happening on every street. And and I will say this, you know, uh in addition to Falls, I have two other roads, Squire being one of them. And 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 another road that somebody, they are getting a whole group of people together, and they want a speed bump on their road, to to Russ's point. Um I don't know, that's always an answer, uh you know, but we can do things to learn more about the road, and we can put more police for. So, you know, I can talk to Matt uh as to when we're doing patrol, where's, where to be. Um and I think that does make an effort, if i- i- if you go down, you know, and it was, it was one of my things with Wellers. Our biggest times were uh before the police came in and after police came home for the day shift. Um if you come by someplace every day for, you know, two years, and you never see a police officer. You see that police officer once, and now it's not never. Now, and it auto instantly, just by having Bill out there more, um it really changed. Um the speed, the the the, all of it, um and it was, it was presence. So I think that's a good jump off, and that's something, like Russ said, they're out there anyway, we can just make them pay more attention to Falls Road.
Yeah, no, I'd appreciate it, thank you so much.
Of course, absolutely.
You even just talking about it.
Oh, absolutely, and uh I can start working on these things immediately, as long as everybody's in agreement.
Yes, I I have a question though about uh what the speed would be, what the speed limit would be for that road.
That's a twenty-five mile an hour road.
Okay, good, alright.
I I don't have to look that up, I know what, I know what it is.
Excellent.
And I, and I, and I have had conversations uh because we've had other um uh people ask about lowering the speed limit. Um again, I went to our resident trooper, and we went into research. Um and we started really diving into it, and it, and it's really the, people are only gonna drive as fast as the road allows. Um and they're gonna drive as fast as the photo, as fast as they feel comfortable driving on that road. Um and I always use the example, and and I'm sure, living on Falls Road, when you're going to Brookfield, you go, we down, we walk a brook.
Yeah.
Which, if I'm in my pickup truck, stuff's flying out, like, you know, just boom, 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 and I'm not even going fast. It's just that road is crazy bumpy. And I, I mean, I I I'm convinced that they will never make it good, because it keeps people under control, because if not, it'd be a thoroughfare. If, people would be going fifty, sixty miles an hour, if, because they wouldn't, you know, they they'd feel comfortable going that fast. So uh you know, there's a lot of little things, and I've learned a lot just being in this position. Um so, uh you know, I'm gonna have more discussions about this, and then, you know, we'll, we'll take some, some, some data on it. And then, you know, like Russ's point, Weller's Bridge was a a a long argument for a long, I think we had sixty-something people on that public forum. Um and they wanted to close the road and take out the bridge and make it one-way and shut down roads and 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 it. We gotta allow people to live and allow our community to to continue. Um but there's things that we can do to let people know that it's not, not here.
Yep, but I'm in favor of that fact.
Good, alright, Laura, thank you so much for joining us on this call. I appreciate it, alright, thanks. Um, okay, oh, there she goes. Um, okay, so uh Board of Selectment Commissions and Board Appointments. Um the first one is gonna be for Conservation Commission. Um so Conservation uh has has met, um this is a vacancy expiring six thirty two thousand twenty-three. And we have a candidate, Stephen Meyer.
Okay, great. So you need a motion to um. Appoint, okay, I make a motion to appoint Stephen Meyer to Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright, for the next one, Museum Board of Trustees, vacancy expiring eleven thirty two thousand twenty-five. Uh we still have no interest, no candidate, nobody's even uh reached out to us on that one, we're gonna continue to advertise it though.
Can we uh, may I say something? Um can we advertise just even a couple of sentences about what the museum board is? Just, I think, you know, after a while, they see there's a vacancy, but there's no explanation, no information. So just maybe a little highlight one week.
Got it.
That might be helpful.
Excellent. Um, and I actually, I I know, looking down the list, I believe there might be a, um this might be a duplicate under uh. Letter I, I think, I believe that's twice. Um so I'm gonna ignore the second one, the second one is Inland Wetlands Commission, this is a vacancy for a permanent position. Um and this actually is uh just to take us till the end of this August, uh August thirty-first. Um this candidate is gonna be moving up, this is uh Sierra Gorglio.
Okay. I make a motion to uh ex- uh extend Sierra Corleone's.
It's gonna be to a point, because this is new for her.
Oh, alright, this is new to her, okay, so I make a mo- a point, uh Sierra to the uh inland wetlands, for as a full member.
I abstain.
I will second that motion. Uh all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright, the next one, um inland wetlands commission alternate, uh vacancy expiring, this also vacancy uh expires. Uh August thirty-first two thousand twenty-two, um and I just want to make a note. Um that uh I wanted to thank uh Kim for coming in and helping me with the interviews. Uh because we had more than one applicant, uh we came up with some great questions, um and I will say, Russ, uh the last. Last week's wetlands meeting, uh there was like every example um that you could have of of authority and everything else. And it was a a great education experience for every, for everyone. Um our choice at the end of that, I'd like to congratulate uh Melanie Jellin for being our candidate.
Good, good, I like Melanie.
Okay, so.
Can I get a motion?
Yep, I make a motion to appoint uh Melanie Jellin as an alternate to the inland wetlands.
I'll second that motion, all in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed? Um and then inland wetlands commission, um. This is for the permanent position, uh this is gonna take us now, now, these positions are for people that are already in it. This is for September first two thousand twenty-two to August thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. And this is to reappoint Russ Durenzo.
Get out.
Inland Wetlands.
I'm up already? What is the time gone? I make a. Do what you want, if you don't appoint me, you'll be doing me a favor.
Oh, boy.
After the last meeting.
I, well, let's go through this point, and I just want to also make a statement, but uh is, Kim?
Yep, uh I make a motion to um, I don't know, yeah, no, I'm seizing. I uh to appoint Russ Durenzo for another term in in the wetlands.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I gotta say, Russ, you did an amazing job um with a very multiple difficult situations. Um and honestly, it was great, when, when we went through um, you know, the guidelines uh from the state. Like you hit every point, um it was textbook, um and although people may not want to hear it. Um but but soil scientist, erosion plan, like all the things that are listed, you just went right down the list. Um so I I just want to say that we're lucky to have you on that commission.
Oh, thank you, Pat, I appreciate that.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so then the next inland wetlands commission, um this is again a position that starts on September first of two thousand twenty-two. Uh and extends until August thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. So this would be the permanent position for the next term for Ciara Gorglio.
Okay, so I make a motion to um appoint Sierra to the inland wetlands for the next um cycle, is that? Yes.
And and I will second that.
Yeah.
Yep, and I will second that, all in favor?
Uh, oh, I can't.
All opposed?
I abstain.
You're still abstaining, Russ. Alright, so inland wetlands commission alternate, this person was just recently on here, now we're gonna extend from September first two thousand twenty-two, August thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. And this is for Catherine Roz.
Okay, I make a motion, oh, so this is, I'm sorry, this is Catherine?
Yes, Kathy Roz.
Oh, right.
Yeah, she just got on, but.
Correct, so now, her term was till uh uh August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two, so now it's the next thing, so.
Um so, a- and I don't have the uh updated um agenda for me, so that's why I don't have it on here. So I make a motion to extend uh Kathy Roz's appointment to the inland wetlands commission to twenty twenty-six.
And I will second that motion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Alright, uh inland wetlands commission alternate nine twenty, so this is again uh September first two thousand twenty-two, August thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. So this would be the permanent or next appointment, because it comes next month before our next meeting uh for Melanie as well.
As an alternate, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion to uh extend uh or appoint Melanie Jellin as an alternate inland wetlands through twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it happens. Um, okay, so now we have a a different one, we have the uh Newtown Health District, so this is our Board of Health. Um this is a vacancy expiring, um and this will extend to June thirtieth two thousand twenty-five. Uh upon great recommendation, I had an interview with this woman, Maureen Singer.
I'll make a motion to um appoint Maureen to the Museum Board of Trustees.
No, Newtown Health District.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing, Newtown Health District, Board of Health.
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, alright, um that's where I had mentioned, uh it looks like uh uh line I and line B are the same.
Yeah, it does.
Um so I I I'm not sure if that was just a typo, um and there was a lot of commissions this month, so it could have been my own. Uh but uh typo there. Alright, uh onto business, um so we have uh. For education appointment um coming up next week. Um and and throughout this process, we've uh, we've been advertising it, um so we have several different people. Um that has expressed an interest, um one thing with talking to Gail is. Uh we didn't actually have a a set process for multiple candidates. Um so I'm bringing this to the Board of to so, of to of Selectmen to consider. Um that if we have multiple candidates, that we can adjourn the meeting and then go to a special election.
Oh, you mean the night of the tenth?
Correct, direct, the town meeting, because we have the housing plan, we have the opt-out, you know, we have our our four things that we have to talk about, but.
Yeah.
Um, how they've done it previous, there've been several different ways, um whether they do a uh hand raise. Um whether they do a paper ballot, or whether we go to a special election. Um so I I I guess I'm looking for feedback on this.
So what, what's the special election as opposed to the hand or the paper ballot?
Well, we would actually have a voting day where we'd have, you know, a ballot, and we would open up the town hall. So there is an additional expense. Um, my thought process was that it was a little bit more fair, as opposed to whoever's at the meeting, or. You know, i- i- I'd rather have.
Controversial?
I don't know that it is, um I I just want to make the, and and you know, we can reserve the right to uh to adjourn it, but. That's where I wanted to talk about this.
Uh town meetings and town votes in small towns is a New England tradition, I hate to see that. Start getting a road in the way.
Though the, the board, the um, the school board generally is, we're generally voting for people during elections. So on elect, you know, on Election Day, so.
True, true.
You know, that, I think that's something that we should be cognizant of too. Um but I would be concerned only because um I don't know anything about the candidates. And I would want to know, just like we would at any election day, something that we can look up and get some information. And I know on Election Day, you can look up information on the school board candidates. So is, I think.
Patrick's right, I I agree with both of you, but you're right on that, yeah, you're right.
I I just, you know, obviously, there's a lot of uh variables each way, but I just felt like this kind of was.
No, no, it's a, it's a good idea, I think, for that, yeah, definitely.
I think it would be consistent with what we already do as a town.
Yeah, that's true, I was just thinking more of the town meeting. Um, we've never really had ballots or anything, you go in, you raise your hand.
Yeah.
If.
But in that situation, I understand.
If you have one candidate, that's, you know, that's an easy process, and we can always do that. What I'm proposing is that we, if we have, you know, maybe they'll, they'll decide that there's only one person by the time we get to this meeting.
Yeah, then there's no sense in doing.
Of course, so this is not for that by any means at all. This is literally for, if it was a contested thing, or if we have different, you know, ideas, you know, each person will that night. Um have to be nominated, um and they will have uh five minutes to discuss their ideas, platforms, whatever. So you'll have a chance to meet them uh as well, um and then I think we could reserve the right at this town meeting on the tenth. Um that we can go to a, so I I just wanted to allow this opportunity that, you know, we could move to an election.
So if we moved to an election, what would the date of that be?
Assuming we do this, it would probably be um two, it would probably be like the twenty-third, Tuesday, the twenty-third.
Okay, okay.
We'd have the meeting on the tenth, and then we'd have a week and a half or so.
Oh, good.
That we bring it to the twenty twenty-third, most likely, that's what we're thinking anyway.
Yep, I think that gives people a chance to um get that information on who they are and.
Yeah.
Make a uh educated choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I need to make a vote for this, I wonder?
Uh maybe we shouldn't, just in case we need to.
Okay. Okay, so then can I get a motion to uh give the Board of Selectmen uh during town meeting the ability to. Adjourn to a special election?
I make that motion, that you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you, and it was, you know, just one of those things that as I started realizing that there wasn't a lot of consistency. I think that it's the right thing to do to have some kind of plan in place.
Yeah.
Um, alright, next order of business, the Hervey M Booth Free School Fund. So you guys may have remembered this over the last couple of years, um we dissolved um that fund. Uh in order for it to be officially uh dissolved, um the Attorney General has to sign off on it. Um the funds were originally given to the library. Um and i- it was approximately twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. With an annual distribution of. And it, it was approximately twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars with an annual distribution of forty-five hundred dollars that the library used for its programs. I met with the town attorney, and they, the attorney general feels that the money should come out of the library and go into region twelve. Obviously, that doesn't help Roxbury. We want to see if this can actually just be used for booth free school, just to help Roxbury. But what it would mean is a reduction of probably about thirty thousand of value from the library endowment.
Oh, wow.
So this is, you know, and I, and I, and I, being on the board of finance, I always did like the way the library, you know, put together and ran a very tight budget. You know, if they had extra money, they always, you know, took back what they needed from the town. I, I would like to make a commitment to the library that if this, if this has to go to, to region twelve, that next budget season, we allow an adjustment for the library. So that they, you know, because their, their funds are going to be adjusted, you know, and if, if possible, you know, help them through this where they've had it since September thirtieth of two thousand twenty. These funds, so they're already in their endowment and already part of their working capital, if you will.
Okay.
What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts?
I'm not voting for the attorney general.
No.
No, and it's, it's a sketchy thing, and, and so our alternative, we are probably estimating at least five thousand dollars in legal fees going forward on this program already. Trying to dissolve this. We can continue to fight. But, you know, talking with the library, they felt that if there was something the town could do, we could just let this move on. We can't reestablish the fund anymore. We can't establish this trust anymore because we've already voted to dissolve it. So we're really in a tough situation with the assistant attorney general. What ad? It's the assistant attorney general that's signing off on this.
I'm not voting for him either. So they want us to cover the thirty thousand?
Well, they want the money to go to the region.
Right, right.
So.
There's no, there, there's no choice in the matter?
No.
We can fight this, but again, we're going to be looking at additional legal costs, and the judge may say, and the judge may say, it's a school fund going to the school. So we might be right back where we started today.
Yeah, I don't like that idea. I like your idea, Patrick, just.
Okay.
I agree.
Let's move forward on a new path.
Okay, all right, then I'll basically, you know, formalize at least a commitment to the library that we will, you know, make them whole next budget season, and I'll, I'll put it in the budget and make sure that it works. We'll lose it from someplace else, or we'll be more cost effective somewhere else. But I, I, I think that the libraries, you know, serves us wonderfully, and they do run a very, very tight budget. You know, I can't, I can't complain with the way they manage their funds, so hats off to them as well. So I guess can we get an? You know, can we?
A motion?
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, a motion, what would the motion be to, to, you've already dissolved the trust?
Correct.
So you're looking for a motion?
Um, that we will stand, we will stand by the library for their loss in the next, in the next fiscal budget.
Well, I don't think you need a, I don't think you need a motion on that. I think your word is, it's not really a vote, right?
Okay, and I, and I agree, I just, if we want to put it on the record, I mean, we can also use these minutes.
Yeah, it's on the record.
To say that we all agree. Good, perfect, all right. Um, okay, next order of business is Hodge Park. There was a, a lot of work that went into this. There were a lot of unanswered phone calls. I probably made at least thirty phone calls to get ahold of somebody that would call me back, somebody that would give me the answers that I needed, even if I talked to somebody, nobody got back to me. I did get through to, finally through Connecticut State, you know, the DOT. And then on to deep as well, and they have basically washed their hands of it. They have no cleaning procedure, no maintenance procedure. It falls on the town. And therefore, it is the town's responsibility. The property, just to be clear, is half in the town and half in the state. When you first pull in, the first half of the park is owned by the state. The second half of the park, once you get in there farther, is the town.
So the town's property is, is along the water?
It is. It's, yes, it's closer. It's farther in, if you will, if you pull off that road. We have been monitoring this since the Fourth of July, when we, we had our, our problems on it. The weekends, nobody's been there. The first time I saw somebody there today, because I drive by every day now, there was three people and they were in the water. They did not have Town of Roxbury stickers on their car. But part of this, I did get the blessing from DOT and deep. That if we want to, because of the town's responsibility, we can make it for town use only. So, and I additionally, I had, through the help of Bill Carrio, made sure that all of our signing for the no parking is up. Everything's compliant. All the signage is there. What this allows us to do is leave it for town residents only.
Right, unless they pay a ninety dollar sticker, right? Anybody could do that. Because we got to make sure, Greenwich got sued on that, and they lost, so you have to give them an opportunity to pay.
Absolutely, and it's no different than any of our other parks. You can still get a park permit, but this would allow our special constables to enforce it, so we can give tickets.
So I could enforce it, yay.
You can enforce it.
I gotta come in and get some tickets, by the way.
Yes, I need some more as well, but yeah, so discussion, what do you guys think?
I think that's a great job.
Yeah, it is very, very good. So nice to have clarity on that. Um, we don't give out park permits to people outside of town.
They can buy them.
They could buy them.
So they can?
Yes.
Ninety bucks, what, what is it? Forty-five bucks?
Yeah, it's like forty-five, uh, yeah, it's forty-five. The ticket's ninety, so if you want to buy it, it's cheaper, and we usually allow people, if you don't want to buy the ticket, and you can just buy the permit.
Well, yeah, that's why we didn't put it at ninety way back when, because we said when.
Correct.
Do we have many, do we have many people doing that?
We do, especially down at the Falls.
The Falls, people buying, yeah.
You recall, when we talked about this before, we made those new park passes yearly, not.
Correct.
So now we can monitor it a little closer.
Yeah, good.
Which is good, and they have to apply every year. They have to get a new one every year. So I, I kind of like the way this was going. I will say that the whole permit process went very, very smoothly this year. Even some of the response that we've had from some of the tickets that we've had are actually pretty good. People are coming in, they're, they're getting the permit if they want to do that, or they're just paying the fine, and they understand. So we haven't had any problems with that at all. Um, so I'd like to move to, well, I guess if I can get a motion, I would want this to evoke that we turn that Hodge Park for town use only and install signage.
Yeah, I make.
Go ahead.
Sure, I make, change to, uh, transition Hodge Park into residence only with proper signage and ticket and parking stickers.
As a town park.
The town.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we are on to out-of-state registrations. We did have a letter from Concerned Citizen. According to, you know, Roxbury's website, Assessor's Responsibility, Assessor's responsibility is to discover, list, and value real estate, motor vehicles, and personal property located within Town of Roxbury, as well as Senator Berthold. It's the town's, through its law enforcement agency, would be responsible for identifying these motor vehicles which are not registered in the state shall be subject to property taxes, we know. So there are, and I, I can forward the details of this, but it's basically neighboring residents with out-of-state plates, whether it be New York, Florida, Vermont. I, I will say, as a, as a bit of a caveat, we did have the information cards that went out with our tax bills. Of that, we had received forty-two responses. Three were added to personal property list and now pay taxes. Four vehicles were owned and registered by an employer. We mailed a property declaration to somebody, but we haven't got it back, so that will be our fourth. One is, another one's willing to pay, so that'll be number five. One, and there's actually two of them that need to be registered in New York because of a garage tax exemption or the ability to park in New York. Apparently, that's a thing. And I'm not sure necessarily what to do that. And then we had another person, both their vehicles are now registered in Connecticut. Of the rest of those, so probably the, the other, you know, thirty-something are New York residents, and their vehicles are, you know, rightfully registered in New York, and they have other homes, and that's, they're calling it their primary residence is not here. So I will, you know, first of all, thank Linda and Kim for putting this together with the tax bills. I think you got a lot of information, and it was nice to see that we got some results. I did have somebody who registered, has their vehicle registered in Florida. Their primary resident is Florida. They live most of their time in Florida, but they felt bad, and they added it to the tax roll here. So now they, they registered their car, so it will stay with the Florida plate, but they pay taxes now in Roxbury. They had it manually added to the list. So that's how these are adding. They're literally, so of these, you know, the six that I mentioned, they are out-of-state plate, now paying taxes in Roxbury. Because this is where it's.
That's great.
In most cases, it's because it's primarily kept here.
Yeah.
Um, the suggestions of this resident, force the existing laws through our local enforcement agency. Again, these are written down. It's not my opinion. I'm just reading from here. Provide funding to the assessor to hire a private investigation firm such as Savoy and Associates or Municipal Tax Service to pursue out-of-state registered vehicles that are violating the law. New Milford and Nagatuck have been successful and have added several cars to their tax rolls and significant funds to the town. I want to go back to that at the end, if I could. Number three, adopt a local ordinance to use powers authorized by a recent change in state law to allow towns to collect two hundred and fifty dollars from residents who dodge local motor vehicle taxes by improperly registering their vehicles out of state. I'm still waiting to get an answer on that, but it is something that we would have to move as a town ordinance. And then, of course, diligently elect, pursue elected officials in the Connecticut State Legislature to remove the motor vehicle property tax from the books. This person thinks they're grossly unfair, and restrict non-compliant vehicle resident owners from using town services. So there's a couple of things to unpack here. I think.
I think.
You know, okay, go ahead.
Kind of addressed that last one in a prior meeting when we were talking about, I think, fees. And I think we all agreed that people who purchase property in the town have the right to use town services regardless.
I think we're all in agreement on that. Correct.
Yeah.
The other thing is the, you know, if we were to adopt an ordinance, it's something we can look into to collect fines of up to two hundred and fifty dollars for residents. Not, you know, improperly registered vehicles out of state.
I think the, the thing is improperly, you know, it's, that comes down to the whole problem of how do you know who's properly or improperly registered, you know?
Correct. It, it requires people to be very honest and very forthcoming. Not everyone is going to be the gentleman that registered his car in Florida and now pays taxes here. You know, not everybody's going to be that, and it's, it's going to be tough to do that. And then the other thing, the Savoy and Associates or Municipal Tax Service to basically drive around the town and look for people that were. Oh, now I did some reading on those articles. What they primarily focused on was apartment complexes, condominium complexes, where you have hundreds of cars, and they're there every day. So they go through there a few weeks apart, and they would notice for repetition, so they could see who was there on a more permanent basis.
Right.
How do you do that here?
Yeah.
You, you, if it's, if it's a car in a garage, let alone the rural nature of our community, it's going to be very difficult. If you guys would like, I have no problem reaching out to these companies and seeing what it's about.
That's a waste in this town.
I would agree.
To sit outside somebody's driveway, you know?
Yeah, I think a little creepy. I, I mean, I think, you know, I'm really, really pleased with the response from the mailer. I think that is a great, I thought that was very well done, and I, you know, I saw that before it went out, and so I, you know, I'd like to continue in that fashion.
So the education piece.
Me too.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. I agree. I just, I wanted to bring this forward. It's been discussed before. This resident continues to send letters, and I want to make sure that, you know, his voice is heard as well, and then we're, you know, we're listening.
The other thing that's important to remember is that quotes are free, you know, and information, you know, could, it could be interesting to meet with someone like Savoy and Associates, just say, so tell me about what it is and what is your plan in a rural community such as this, so that we, you know, it just takes some time, that's all, you know, to meet with someone like that, but they could come out and we could sit and just say, so what, how, how would you approach this? This isn't Nagatuck. It, just in terms of it feeling like we had information, and information, I feel is always power, so. And it doesn't cost us anything to have those conversations. It just would be interesting. I just find it interesting to go, how would you do that, you know?
That's no problem to follow up on. I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
And I'll get more information, so I'll be, I'll be reporting to you that next month as to what we find. Hey, look, with all that work that I just spent on Hodge Park?
I know.
This is.
It is.
This, this, I will say, this position has enlightened me to how broken the state government is.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who's in charge there. It's, there's this, it's just a huge machine.
Lawn mowing you can't get done, getting ahold of somebody for so many reasons. We ended up hitting three seventeen because it became unsafe. And they have four machines, and they were all broken. They have one mechanic for three different garages for the state. So it, it, it's just, it's frustrating, to say the least.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item up on the agenda is Falls Road, so I'm gonna take that off if you guys are okay. We're gonna skip over that. Because I think we had a nice hearty, hearty discussion on that.
Yeah.
Um, I have the opioid settlement because that has been settled. And I just wanted to make a note, because we have gone through a, a lot of meetings and paperwork and all this. And I just wanted to report out that the Town of Roxbury received sixty dollars and sixteen cents.
Are you kidding me?
As the yearly payment from the opioid settlement.
That's criminal. It really is.
It is criminal.
And we have to allocate it to certain funds, so I just, I don't want to get into that. It, it is here. That is the stipulation. I just wanted.
Give it to the library.
We've talked about it for.
Oh, my gosh.
Very good.
Good.
Okay, so hopefully, we won't have to talk about the opioid settlement ever again. Completely, we, we spent more printing paperwork. I have a ginormous file for the opioid settlement, and we spent more on paper. But it is what it is. Unfortunately, you know, you can't change that, so. There were, there were, I mean, not everybody received that low. I think New Haven was one of the ones that received a very high amount, like ninety-something thousand. I think that was the highest number that I saw. Some of the other cities, you know, they received some, some high allotments, and I'm not exactly sure all of the calculations, but it, it seems, it seems much to do about nothing. Um, all right, so let's go on. The next thing is short-term rentals in town.
Okay, so, um, I have four documents and I'm just gonna go through these pretty quick. I did a bunch of research and it seemed that. The town of, um, Groton has the most current. Information because they're in it now. Actually, I think tonight is their town meeting about short-term rentals. So it's, it's very current. So there was, um, information from two thousand seventeen from, uh. Northwest Hills Cog that was put together by Jocelyn Air. That just talked about what's happening in around us. A lot of towns are. Kind of combining it with their bed and breakfast zoning, um, you know, there's. Some people don't know what to do, some, you know, it's kind of a mishmash, but. You know, they're just concerned about. Noise and it depends on the town too, because some towns have lakes and, you know, so that can be a little bit different than. Then, then Roxbury, but I included that just so you had some history. Uh, on that. And the second thing that I had, and Julie, I don't know if you're.
I'm ready. I've got the, um, the four items ready. Just tell me what you want.
All right, well, why don't you just stick it up, stick, stick number one up and just so we can, they can at least see what it is that I was talking about. And we'll go through them kind of quick, but. At least one and two will be fast. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so there's a, it's a several pages, one, two, three. Well, actually three pages. This is the Jocelyn Air, uh, article. And even though it's two thousand seventeen, it's really, nothing really has changed since then. So I thought it was still, um, something that was worth talking about. And each town is, you know, not necessarily doing the same thing. Uh, they're just really in conversation about it still. So the second one. The second document. I got from an article that will put up last, but it was an article. In. Newspaper article about what was taking place in Groton. And this happens to be referenced and it was. A firm that was hired by this town of Groton to talk about or, or to. Let them know the difference between zoning regulations and then the code of ordinance. And what this shows is that there's a lot more that can be done with an ordinance, which I think you both know. But, um, it's good to see it in more of a chart form, so it really talks about things that can be. That can be changed or regulated and. I think the thing that's important to remember if for anyone that ends up going this route is that. If we did zoning regulation, then things that currently exist would not be regulated, so. It would maybe grandfathered in, so that's why an ordinance is something that is. Considered the best route to go. And Jocelyn's article talks about that as well as some other things I've read. So in the third one. Great. This is actually a draft ordinance from Groton. And I'm gonna read the, um, the purpose. And this is termed a short-term rental ordinance. It is the intent of this ordinance to accommodate the desire of some property owners to rent their residential dwelling. On a short-term basis, but to establish appropriate requirements. To mitigate the disruption that short-term owner occupied and vacation rental dwellings may have. On neighboring properties in a neighborhood. So what they do is they go through definitions, what it means. What different things mean, and then basically outline, uh, registration, some standards. Uh, and penalties now. The real, the reason for this is in an article, which Julie, you won't, you don't have to put up at the end. There's the fourth thing. And I got this out of the article. They asked the police for. A record of any disturbances in short-term rentals and they couldn't provide the information because. There was no listing of who had short-term rentals. So I, and I was like, oh, that makes sense, you know? And I, this has come up in zoning, you know, people, you know, have been talking about this and. What I liked about Groton's approach is that it's not saying you can't do it. It's just. That there is, uh, a set of standards. Do you have emergency information posted? I mean, it's kind of like, you know, making sure that you have, um, that this is a safe place for people to. Is there someone the town can, or the police can contact if there's, if there's a problem? And there's a, there's a list of quite a few things like that, so. I, I think it's something that we might want to just consider. Mainly for a safety. Safety reasons and. You know, we have people register for all kinds of other things and, you know. When you go to rent out your home on a short-term basis for a vacation rental. It just seems like something that we might want to have that information and for the police really to have as well. Any questions?
I do, I suppose. I, I have always liked the idea of knowing who is. Especially if you had, uh, an emergency contact. Happen, I feel like there should be an emergency contact for any house and we should know. How do we, I guess the two parts of that. You know, what are, else are we looking to address and how is the enforcement gonna look?
Right, that's the big question that all the other towns are talking about. It's not a new, not a new thing. So, and, and that's what they're talking about in, um. You know, in Groton and the newspaper article, which is the fourth, fourth piece. Actually has pros and cons on all of it, like anything else. And I'm looking down because I'm looking at my, my own paperwork here. Cause on my phone, this thing is itty-bitty. Penalties in the ordinance, ordinance. The first offense on the property, written warning by certified mail, second offense, a hundred dollars per offense. You know, and then it just depends on how many offenses in a, in a calendar year and the dollar amount goes up. I, I think. You know, the, the easy thing with the short-term rental is that you can look up. Where they are because they're, they're advertising themselves on VRBO, Airbnb, Home2Go. And right now VRBO has fourteen plus or minus. Airbnb has eleven plus or minus depending on, you know, um, and that's when I looked it up last week. They're not all the same. It's not all the same places in both of these, so I gotta think that there could be upwards of, you know, twenty-three. Places in Roxbury approximately. And, um, so this is really how they advertise and so I, I think it's not that hard to follow up on the addresses. I'm not looking for decisions, I'm just bringing it up and I thought, I think we need time to kind of. Think about it, you know, and maybe, um, Julie, maybe you can forward these documents to them so that they can take.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I hate trying to understand it just.
Yeah, no, no.
I like getting things before a meeting or, you know, like what you just did, explain it and let, let me go home and. When I have time, really read this stuff so I understand it and, and don't just. You know, make it, make a rash decision.
Oh, yeah, no, no, and I wouldn't, I, I was not even going to even bring up any kind of voting on this. This is. I think this is gonna take us a few months just to kind of, just think about it and read through and we'll see what happens in Groton and. You know, any other towns, but I just, I wanted to formally bring it up. And supply some information that then we can kind of think about, you know, and just continue because we don't have an active. Issue that we know of, but again.
That was gonna, yeah, that was gonna be my question. Is the, is there something that has prompted this discussion? That we've had issues?
Well, you know, again, this has come up quite a bit over the last few years in the zoning board, so the zoning commission. So I said that I would definitely bring it up and, um. Because, you know, other towns are having issues and just because we don't now doesn't mean we won't. There are, you know, there is, there are individuals who are buying up properties and only using them for this purpose. And so it does in the future, it could play a part in changing some residential areas. But, you know, that's not there now and, um, you know, like. I like to think, you know, Roxbury is proactive and thinking ahead before there's a. Before it gets out of hand and not that we're saying that, you know, I would not, I, I use. Air, I go to these, you know, places and I use them when I travel, so. I'm for them, um, but it is important, you know, to know that you're. You know, that you're taken care of as a, as a consumer. And I think that's the town's responsibility to make sure that happens. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Sure.
Appreciate your work. Okay, um, any other comments or anything, Russ? You're good?
I'm good.
All right. Next time, uh, next up is, uh, town hall upgrades. There's, uh, not much going on. Uh, kitchens, kitchens in, countertops are in, appliances are in. Backsplash can't be done because we have cabinet issue. Um, the cabinet doesn't work where it is. But, uh, they did, uh, there was a function, uh, this Saturday and they used the kitchen, all the appliances were working, uh, and other than the backsplash, everybody just loves it. And it's going great, so, uh. Next order is the Housing Plan Steering Committee. Do you have any updates on that, Kim, or did you need to? Cause we're ready to go to meeting, so I'm not sure why it was still there.
Um, yes, we need to, uh, accept the plans.
Correct, correct.
So, um. Yes, so should I just make a motion or do you want me to, you want to?
Go for it.
Okay. Let me just say ahead of time, so the planning commission accepted the plan that it does meet the requirements for the P O C D. We had at that meeting had a chance for. The residents have their final say on, and then really no one really had anything to say. I think it was really all support. The next stage was for it to continue in the thirty-five day. Posting, which had started, uh, with no changes on June thirtieth. Which allows us to, um, go to town vote on August tenth. After we accept the plan as the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and send it to a town vote on the August tenth. So. Does that make, are we good with all that before I make a motion?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
All right, so I make a motion that the, um, housing plan. Be accepted, um, by the Board of Selectmen and moved forward to a town vote. Uh, at its meeting on.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Great work, Kim. We're almost, what, are we out of here yet? We're almost at a year.
Just about, almost, not quite.
Great job, great job. Nice to follow that. Um, okay, so, uh, next order of business, bridge and culver updates. Have a couple of projects going on right now. Davenport's all ripped up. Um, they are still waiting on steel as of today. So they've been jackhammering the west side of the hill. Everything's diverted, everything's ready. They're putting the footings in. Once the steel comes in, they'll drop it into place. We're still on track, uh, at this point, even though we have the steel delay, um, it's hitting everyone. The next, uh, bridge is Squire Road at South Street. I still don't have the steel on that either, um, so we're putting that off a little bit. It's, it's supposed to be in any day. But now we've missed our window. Uh, we were hoping to do it at the end of July. Um, and now I have Public Works employees on vacation. Um, we had structured the vacation so they would take it after the bridge was constructed. So my tentative date to start is right after Labor Day. Everybody will be back, but I, I felt that the best thing to do, uh, with squires to only tackle it if we have everybody on deck. Uh, we, we need our full slate of, uh, of people. We don't have many and we're gonna need them all. So we're just a slight delay on that and hopefully the steel will come in and we can keep this, uh, schedule as it goes. Botsford, um, the RFP went out. We awarded the bid to Dwayne Murray Masonry. Um, you all know him as Mark Murray. And, uh, very pleased to get that going. And Wellers Bridge, uh, we're still with the, uh, agreed for the estate design at zero cost of the town. So I'm pretty excited about that, but again, that's gonna be, uh, far off. Next on the, uh, agenda, budget and capital expense, um, waiting for, uh, Sheet Rock to start at, uh, Public Works. The next steps of that from a public work standpoint, in addition to the truck that we're doing and in addition to the loader that we're doing. Is, uh, fixing the rusty, the lower pails of the, uh, garage doors there. We're gonna actually replace a panel with, uh, some glass panels and then move everything down and put a new bottom on it. Um, and also I'm getting estimates for lighting, um, because LED lighting, as soon as we get this all finished, uh, I'm gonna want to move ahead with that. Um, I had E S C come out and now I've, uh, reached out to, uh, C C M and, uh, Northwest Hills Cog. To see what companies work with EverSource to try and, uh, get the best, uh, deal that we possibly can, so I have some other calls on that. Hopefully I'll have a, uh, update on that, uh, probably hopefully by the next, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting. Yeah, yeah, I'm enjoying this. Uh, we're getting a lot done, but, uh, a couple hurdles along the way anyway, but, uh.
I, are you getting quotes on, uh, doors on the other building too, or?
I did, uh, I haven't gotten prices on it, but, uh, you know, I don't want to necessarily, I, obviously the, 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 the building we're working on right now, I want to see how much we can possibly get done. Before I start working on the other one, but, uh, you know, being that the, uh, Sheet Rock came in, you know, far under expectations and. You know, we're gonna see where lighting hits. Um, it's not very much for the garage doors as it is. Uh, but then the next step is gonna be garage doors and electrifying that, uh, the pole bar.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm enjoying that and, uh, I can't wait to see it done. Yep. Uh, okay, and that's. Pretty much, uh, it. Uh, the next is, uh, fire marshal report. There is no fire marshal report. Janitor's away. I will have another report for you, uh, next month. Uh, resident trooper report, um, breakdown, uh, three criminal, non-criminal investigations. One accident investigated, no DUI accidents, no, uh. D W I infractions, four infractions issued, seventeen written warnings for a variety of motor vehicle offenses. And a hundred and seventy-five miscellaneous requests for service. We are still, uh, short, um, with Bill being out, so. Hoping, hoping for the best with, uh, Bill and wishing him the best. And I think that's about it. Other than a note to please remind people to lock their cars and keep, you know, don't keep any valuables. And that is it.
We still have, um, the others on, uh, on, uh, more hours?
They're adding their shifts so they can.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, um, we have Jason and we have Joe and then we have Matt as well. Um, and hopefully you guys got the, uh, email as, well, there's, uh, under other business, um, hopefully you got the, uh, general code. Email today, so you can look through that as your leisure. That's what we're gonna be bringing to a town meeting next week.
Okay.
And that. Other business?
Well, just so you, you guys are aware, cause I didn't know this. We have a different code, health code than Newtown does, because we chose that in two thousand and five. And that health code is, uh, Newtown is a hundred, ours is fifty feet from a wetland or water course for septic. And then you have to have two feet above modeling. Modeling is where water comes up and then. Uh, under Newtown and ours is eighteen inches. So we're, we're still in the old code. Donna put out a letter because the Wetland Commission has a subdivision application. Where the Health District denied the septic because it was, um, within a hundred feet of the wetlands. And then they found out Roxbury never. Roxbury, I'm just telling you this so you know. Roxbury decided to stay with the state code and that's what the state code is, fifty feet, eighteen inches. Newtown, you could go stricter than the state, but you can't go less. So Newtown wants stricter by going a hundred feet, hundred feet and two feet for the model.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that, that we are on the state code and people. I just want you to know that, that we are on the state code and people do get confused about that. Newtown, every town has its own code even, and it's not by the district. It's by what the town decides.
So Newtown denied someone in Roxbury based on their code and not the fact that we had, didn't go with theirs. Is that right?
Well, the Health District denied someone based on their code and then they realized that, that we, we stuck with the state code, that we didn't want to go with the increase.
Okay.
Did, did they? I, I don't even know whose decision it was. I mean, the Board of Selectmen made that decision because they are our Health Department. So who makes those decisions? I guess we do.
But I guess historically, just because I also learned about this too, and I, I think it's good. Originally, we were higher than the Health District and now they've jumped over us to a much higher, uh, uh, regulation, as I understand it. So is it mandatory that we, you know, abide by Newtown or is there?
No. We, we have.
Without their signature though? So without their signature, they can still do everything they need to within the town of Roxbury.
No, what, what Newtown, what Donna realizes is that we had a different code and she forgot about that. So they ended up approving it because they had to.
That's, that's what my concern was. That was what my concern was.
They wrote a letter to Wetlands, kind of saying, hey, we had to approve it. But Wetlands is a parallel permit. So you gotta get a permit from both Wetlands and Health Department, even though we have different standards.
Yeah.
Now Wetlands has a hundred feet, but not for septics, but, but for anything. And we don't deny you just because you're within a hundred feet. It's, it's, we want to look at what the potential impact is.
Right.
Reasonable.
We've been, we've been, we've been approving septic systems within fifty feet, like the health code, except if it doesn't make sense to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. In this case, we haven't made a decision, so I don't know what that decision will be, but I wanted you to be aware of it because I wasn't aware of it.
Hmm.
Cause I saw the letter from Donna explaining it and saying, why did she write this?
Um, thank you. That's, that's helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. As long as it's not limiting our town people for any reason, then yeah, we, we're good to say.
Well, I am gonna call Donna as a part of that application to find out why they went to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
It used to be twenty-five.
Yeah.
That was ten years ago. And then they stayed up to the fifty and then they went to a hundred. I want to know why. Are they having failures that are impacting streams, lakes, wetlands? That they found a need to do that? So every case is different, especially with wetlands. But I am gonna call her and find out why and I will report back to the board so that you know why they went to a hundred.
That's, that would be great.
We were never, we were never made aware and we were never given the opportunity to, to change the, with them, I guess. They forgot about us.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
You know what I think it was? We weren't in the Health District. That's what it was. We weren't in the Health District when all that happened.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Any other business?
None.
All right.
Get a jurn.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed?
Home Depot, Kim?
No, I, I, I'm all set. I'm in the, I'm at the museum parking lot.
Okay, you stayed neutral. All right.
I did. Yes. I was a good girl.
Russ, that was our longest meeting yet.
That was good though. We had a lot.
There was a lot to cover, so I thank you very, very much and, uh.
And thank, thank you both for your patience and my, and, you know, listening to me too. So I appreciate that.
Of course.
Appreciate your hard work, Tim.
Yes, both of you. Thank you. All right, everyone. Have a great night.
Yep, you too.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.
Bye-bye.